Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council's Post Agenda for Wednesday, September 11th, 2019. My name is Louise Chris and with us today is Logan Showalter, our Sign Language interpreter. At the request of Councilmember Teresa Kael Smith, a discussion on the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy partnership with the City of Pittsburgh. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Cable Cast Post Agenda regarding the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy and the agreement with the City of Pittsburgh. I'm Councilwoman Teresa Kael Smith. I'm chairing the meeting. I called for the meeting and we'll be joined by additional council members. We do have some tight timeframes here, so we're going to start right away with, I will announce that we are joined by Councilman Corey O'Connor at the moment and others are expected out. Councilwoman Coghill is unavailable. He's at a funeral, however, he did give me some questions that he would like answered. We're going to begin with everyone introducing themselves and then opening comment and statement by Chief of Staff Dan Gilman from the Mayor's Office.
Thank you very much, Councilman. I'm Dan Gilman, Chief of Staff for Mayor William Paduta.
Mike Gable, Director of Public Works.
Jane Miller, President and CEO of the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy.
Ross Chapman, Director of City Parks Department, City of Pittsburgh.
And we're also joined by Councilwoman Harris, Darlene Harris. And Chief of Staff, we're going to open it up to you. We know that you have a few comments that you'd like to make and you have a meeting to...
Thank you, Councilman. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here. I wanted to start first with maybe clearing the air on a few misconceptions that I think have been put out there through different sources, as well as, you know, some of the reasons that the mayor believes is supportive of a referendum to the people on this issue. First of all, I want to be clear, there is no agreement between the City and the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy about spending these dollars. If the public were to vote for a tax increase on a referendum, every penny of that is city tax dollars and comes to the city. No dollar could then go out without a vote of City Council. That's a fundamental rule for any dollar coming in. So people who have talked about how the money would go and go away from councils is not accurate. If there were to be an agreement like we have on other existing relationships with the Parks Conservancy, which certainly Jane and I have been talking about for well over a year, about ways to partner more, that agreement would have to come before City Council and you would have to have annual votes of City Council to do it. Nothing could ever circumvent this very public process and public opportunity. Second of all, we have said from day one that any agreement that could be developed would never, ever take a union job away from the City of Pittsburgh. We are not looking at transferring union jobs to the Parks Conservancy. We are not looking at taking away union work and giving it to the Parks Conservancy. If this referendum were to pass and dollars would come in, we would be hiring more union workers, particularly laborers, in our parks to support our parks enterprise. So I think, you know, people like to throw around a term of privatization and I want to very make it clear, first and foremost, parks are our greatest public owned, public maintained and public managed spaces and it will always be the government's responsibility to do that. That being said, and you know, some members have been around this table for a long time or in, you know, community organizations for a long time, we know we are not putting into our parks what we used to, going back to the 90s and earlier, nor are we doing what other cities do. I just came back from a trip from Minneapolis who wins best parks every year and it's not even comparable. They've had a taxing authority since the 1860s or 1870s, so it's certainly not the same. They spend about $300 per capita on their parks. We spend about, I think, is it 90?
Eighty-three dollars.
Eighty-three dollars per capita. So when you talk about putting in three and four times, you get the results of it. And we saw it there with just incredible space, really looking at equity and what happens in all neighborhoods. And I also want to clarify that this conversation we're having in the referendum would not just go to traditional park space, but it includes recreation. So we're talking about our rec centers. We're talking about opportunities for rec to tech and job training and computer labs in our recreation facilities as well. Also, and I think everyone at this table knows it, but the City has had a long partnership with the Parks Conservancy, projects across the city like the Frick Environmental Center in Councilman O'Connor's district or the Schenley Visitors Center, the Westinghouse Fountain and Councilwoman Strasburger's, countless things. And Highland Park with Ms. Gross and certainly most recently, the beautiful restoration of the fountain that Councilwoman Harris and Mrs. Rooney champion. Projects that just quite honestly, without the Parks Conservancy and their ability to leverage private funds, would not have happened. When you look at our need to invest in fixing basketball courts and keeping our baseball fields up to date, investing in our rec centers and mowing the grass and all the stuff that Tom Pollan and his crew try to do, we didn't have the money to invest in a historic fountain like we did in the North Side or like we did in Councilman Strasburger's district or to build a world-class environmental center. The Parks Conservancy allowed us to leverage private funds and partner, all still publicly owned, all still through this body, no agreements, no dollars going without it, but it creates that partnership that allows you to leverage and bring in outside funds in a different way. I also want to just directly respond, there's a common comment out there of how can we ask the taxpayers for this when the nonprofits don't pay? And two things. First of all, this is a democratic process. It's going to the people and the people will fully have a say, of course. The second thing is, it sounds good. I do get it. I'm a Pittsburgher and a taxpayer and one who is trying to figure out my own personal budget. The reality is, it sounds good, but it's not real. We have seen it for years. The idea that all of a sudden the corporate community, the nonprofit community is suddenly just going to write checks to the city is just not, not going to happen at the level we're talking about. We're talking about the ability to bring in $10 million a year to go into our park system every single year, above and beyond what we already put in. Part of the agreement here is the City will never cut, what, I shouldn't say never. Mayor Paduto has committed, he would not reduce what we're already putting in. So this is 10 million above and beyond, plus whatever extra dollars we can leverage into it. And that's not going to come from other sources realistically. And the last piece I would point out on that is if there were anything that goes to the City, of course, it comes to council and a budgeting process, but you couldn't earmark it just for parks. I mean, if City Council wanted to say, "We're going to vote to raise taxes and it's just going to go to parks," we could not do that, as we learned with the Housing Opportunity Fund where we had to commit $10 million and then raise the de-transfer tax as a disjointed dual action. So this is a way to guarantee it actually all goes to the park system and cannot be raided. If the going gets tough in the City of Pittsburgh again, like we saw in 2001, 2 and 3, you know, we couldn't raid that to fix this building or whatever it may be. It would be, you know, to steal a term from the presidential campaigns, a lockbox for parks funding in an important way. So those were kind of my, I just wanted to address a lot of what I've heard. Happy to answer any questions, of course, from any member today or anytime going forward.
And so we're going to hear from everyone else, but I think before we do, since you have to leave, we're going to hear from council first and let them ask any questions that they have of you.
Sure.
We're also joined by Councilwoman Deb Gross and Councilwoman Erica Strasburger and I already mentioned Councilman O'Connor and Councilperson Harris. And I will just say that I called for this Post Agenda because I do have some serious concerns. I do not like the way that this entire process rolled out. I feel that there's a lot of misinformation also being distributed, even as you're trying to clarify, I feel that there's a lot that could be said for some of the comments and I do have a, hold the administration in a high regard, but at the same time, I, I'm not supportive of this in the way that we're doing this. I think everybody here on council, I think we all care very deeply about our parks and I don't think that's a question about our parks and our level of concern and care for our parks. Our concern is more for taxing our residents again and what's going to happen with that funding and the accountability that comes with it. And currently, some of the projects that Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy has been working on or should have been working on and the status of those projects, and I'll get into that as I get into my conversation and I actually have some copies of agreements and I'll get into those as well. But I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues first out of respect for them and then I'll ask my questions. Councilwoman Gross, do you have questions?
Thank you, Councilwoman. Actually, so I do, I have some in front of me, I think, that you also have from Councilman Coghill.
Yeah, do you want to ask those?
And then I also, of course, have questions on my own. I think, first of all, what I don't see in front of us and which we know is the language that was at the top of the referendum page. And so I'm wondering if we could also have a quick read...
Excuse me, can I also interrupt for one moment? I apologize, but we are also joined by Controller Michael Liam. Thank you, Control, for being here. Okay, I'm sorry, Councilwoman.
Not at all. So, right, I think because what we're discussing here is how, you know, questions about, that we get from constituents about how funds will be handled, about how decisions are going to be made, about especially this, this use of funds will be determined and the governance structure is where I'm hearing about, especially on the eve of having or on the cusp of, or after having the failed referendum on childcare, aftercare and funding at the county level that faced the same criticism that, well, you're going for the revenue before you've decided the governance. And that while it was long and painful, when we did pass the tax, the real estate transfer tax increase, after two years of debate really, right, we spent a year here at this table talking about only the governance structure for the Housing Opportunity Trust Fund. And it was long and we got mad at each other and we had a lot of input from public citizens and we had a lot of long public hearings and we craft, we struggled over the language and it took about 12 months and then we figured that out. And then we started talking about the sources of funding that trust fund. And same thing, it took a long time. People were very aggravated with us for taking so long. We had a lot of public input. We differed from each other. We came to a final, you know, resolution and we started collecting that tax, as you mentioned. And so we're now dispensing those funds. And now we have a chance to kind of revisit and see if we want to make changes. We were talking about that earlier. And so this one is a bit out of sequence. It's not the same sequence as we follow for the Housing Opportunity Trust Fund, I'll just put it that way. And so I'll go to Councilman Coghill's questions first because he was wanting to make sure that we didn't forget to ask his questions.
This way he gave us both the handwritten copy.
So that I don't do that. I'm going to literally read his handwriting here. Who is financing the jointly produced television commercials? I have not seen them, but he asked me if I'd seen them. And is there participation from the city budget and how is that split from the city and the Conservancy?
I'd say there are no public city dollars going to any promotional activity or television commercials. As to who's funding it, that I can't answer, but there's no city money whatsoever.
Does anyone at the table know who's funding the television commercials?
The Conservancy is funding them.
I see. And so this, your source of funds for those commercials, or I guess for, I'm going to speak, he said that the commercials were beautiful, but he really wants to know who's paying for them.
He said the parks look beautiful in the commercials, is what he said.
And so, and the parks look beautiful. Those are city parks, we're very proud of them, right? And with your help over a long time, but so how much do those commercials cost?
I don't have that dollar amount for you available, but it is unrestricted funds that we have available to us to use.
So you raised the money from a donor or...
Yeah, it's private funds that, all of the money that we raise, we raise privately. And so it's through sources of revenue that we receive for unrestricted...
Word on the street is that it's about a million dollar promotional campaign.
No, that, that I can tell you is not true.
Okay. So it's definitely under, for the referendum staffing and...
Well, this isn't, these, the commercials that you're seeing are not referendum. They do not refer to the referendum. They only are talking about the parks, the history of the relationship between the city and the Conservancy, but they are not promoting the referendum. So they are not campaign commercials.
I see. That's a technical and important point to make, I assume, because if you were spending money to lobby for citizens to vote a certain way on a ballot item, there would be reporting.
That's correct.
Right. Okay. So you are reporting some expenditures some ways and then other expenditures...
Anything that is campaign related is our campaign expenses. Anything that is not referendum related and talking about the referendum are non-campaign expenses.
Okay, so the television commercials are non-campaign expenses. And so where do we see the reporting on the campaign-related expenditures?
Those are part of our annual financial reporting that we have to do as an organization.
So at the end of the year...
So 990s, our annual reports, our financial report statements.
You have camp, you have the campaign finance reports are included in your 990s.
We will do campaign reporting. I think our first one is due October 25th, so we will...
And that is something that is, I know that we report to City Council, to the Controller's office, to the City Controller's office, to the county elections and to ethics, and did I miss one? And to the state? So I assume you have...
We are going to be following all of the campaign finance reporting requirements.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so actually, I didn't read all of these questions before I read them out loud. And so the next one is, were the commercials specifically purchased to sway voters in November? And you are saying that the television commercials are merely about this relationship?
The, the current commercials are solely about our parks, the relationship between the city and the Conservancy and work that the Conservancy has done over our history. So they are not campaign-related. They're not promoting or trying to influence the vote for a referendum. There's no reference to a referendum in the current commercials.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Coghill's last question is, has the Conservancy and the city ever jointly converged in advertising before?
Not that I know of, but I certainly can't speak to all of history, but I'm not familiar with any time there's been any kind of joint advertising.
Media purchasing or something.
Not, not in my tenure, I'm not aware of it either.
I don't know if at like a ribbon cutting, there were t-shirts passed down or so, I don't know. I wouldn't want to sit here and say never, but nothing I know about.
Event brochures or something, right?
No, and I can certainly say that the City does not spend money on TV advertisements related to the parks or in any way. Anything we do is done by our TV crews upstairs and aired on our channel.
Thank you, thank you. So I'm going to, I don't want to, I know we're being mindful of time. Normally we try to fit these things in for an hour or so.
I'd just like to keep the questions directed to Chief of Staff Gilman since he has to leave and we have time to ask the others.
I beg your pardon.
No, no, I know.
Okay, so Chief Gilman, I'm going to cut to the chase then so I can save my time, that I am constantly reminded of the discussion we had about the water system and keeping public assets public. And Councilwoman Strasburger last year hosted a Post Agenda on privatization and we had really great information from a variety of speakers, but especially Donald Cohen, whose nonprofit think tank is called In the Public Interest, I think I have that right, in California. And he really helped us understand that there is a range here, right? And that there, in a spectrum of partnerships with private entities, that cities or counties and authorities can have very healthy partnerships. And he has these acronyms, DBFOM, which I don't know why that sticks in my mind. So when you're partnering to design restoration of the historic entrance to Highland Park, right, that's a kind of like what he, in his spectrum, is a kind of really safe partnership where you're not really seeding, you don't have accountability or transparency issues. It's a, it's a kind of healthy partnership. Building it for us, let's, you know, we're working right now on restoring a tunnel that was an original, in the original Highland Park plan that the neighborhood is very excited about. So doing the actual construction, like you did some contract out, you know, roadwork from Pendott or something like that. Financing, I think, Ms. Miller spoke very eloquently to how, and Chief Gilman, sorry, that, that there has been a long history of the Conservancy's both here and in other cities, especially New York City's Parks Conservancy, raising money from the private sector and being the steward of those monies to augment and add for the city to achieve its goals around parks. But then as you get down that spectrum and after you cross that line, Mr. Cohen, again from In the Public Interest, really cautioned public sectors, you know, public agencies everywhere to not cross the line into seeding operations or even seeding maintenance. And it was a really dear lesson for me because when Mayor Paduto appointed me to the PWSA Board of Directors in 2014 and I stepped into it kind of mid-year in 2014, that was the contract that the Rensselaar administration had given to the Veolia Corporation that ruined our billing system, ruined our water system. The Veolia Corporation, the biggest multinational water company on the planet, was in control of our water authority. It had crossed the line over into not just, into operating and maintaining that and they even had their own employees and house and those kinds of things. So that you'd get very uncomfortable there and obviously you really, we really lost control. I mean, Councilwoman Smith was championing the issue around billing and they just lied to our faces, right? I mean, I think we can say that, right? They sat right here and said, "No, no, it's fine."
Billing, lied, I can go on with the list.
And so, you know, we had to fire them, we had to sue them and broke that contract and they still walked away with millions of dollars and it's, it's been better since. So that's, I think, where, that was still always, it was, always was public asset. We had never seeded our, we had never sold off an inch of pipe, but it was still a loss of control that damaged public health, public trust and cost the taxpayers money. So, and that we're still spending, you know, hundreds of millions now to rectify. It's really a hard lesson to learn. And so we want to make sure that we have all the transparency and that we also have the sophisticated understanding of the partnerships that we're working into. So that's, those are my lines of questions, but I'll let you go at this point. Thank you for your time.
No, I appreciate it, Councilman, and I wouldn't disagree with a single word you said. I think full agreement from the administration with you. I think one key difference I would point out is for-profit versus non-profit partners, which I think does make a very big difference. And at PWSA, clearly we, the City learned a very bad lesson about when for-profit entities looking to increase their bottom line, use public assets to do it and do things, quote unquote, "on the cheap." I would say, you know, in our existing relationship with the Parks Conservancy, on your scale, there are some things that shift over that line and that's why things are a little different and with others. I'm looking at Councilman O'Connor with the Gulf, First T, which is made, there's a lease with them, there is, they operate it, they're building it, they fundraised for it. And again, a reality that sadly with all of our needs in the city, from, you know, fixing the bathrooms in this building to putting female quarters in our fire stations, running a golf center is unfortunately, I don't think for most, always council's decision at the top of that list.
And we certainly, we have agreements with volunteers to maintain, you know, concession stands or, you know, Duncan Park, right? So that they have the management of the park. And so, but again, we want to make sure that we're very careful...
Absolutely.
And very clear.
Yeah.
And everybody has a consensus and understanding, so I appreciate it.
So there are those and there's, you know, Schenley Plaza, which I will always point to as a, you know, to me, one of the best projects I've seen in my 15 years, taking a surface parking lot and turning it into a beautiful park. Was there no public money, city money? I can't remember if none or close to none when it was done. That is maintained primarily by the Parks Conservancy with support from Public Works, but things like the carousel are run by the Parks Conservancy, the restaurant that are in there are leased and the dollars that come into that help go into it. That is the type of relationship we see continuing. And it has also led to some master planning attempts, Hesron being a prime example, or Arsenal too, in your district. I know you care deeply about where the Parks Conservancy jointly led efforts with the city to master plan those types of parks, so...
And again, that is on that end of the design end of the spectrum, which I think is...
So we see the existing relationship continued and expanded in that same light. We do not, no one is certainly selling any assets, but turning over decision-making and again, all those dollars would come to this table every year. These are public tax dollars. If we then said, "Hey, Parks Conservancy," and I'm making this up, this is not, this is not a thing, this is an example, but if we said, "Hey, we want you to do in Arsenal Park what you do in Schenley Park for us, or at Schenley Plaza, and we'll give you a million dollars a year to do it." That would be an agreement that this board, this body would have to talk about, approve transparently through a public process, just the way we do.
Well, since you've gone down that path, then I'm going to have to respond a little bit because one of the issues that you have, you'll remember when you were sitting at this table and since, is that when you stay under those agreements, sometimes they are pre-authorized by this body and I've had issue with that because then they lack transparency. I think a good example is how we just attached the co-op agreement to PWSA and so that everybody could read it. It was very public and that was a great example, so I thank you for that. When we don't see the co-op agreements, I think it gets more problematic. And so I would like, if we're going to go down that path, I am feeling, you know, less enthusiastic about that until there are safeguards in place, right? I don't think I have the co-op agreement for Schenley Plaza. Is it attached to the legislation and when would that have been?
It goes back to 2005.
Is it on Legislaw?
Mayor O'Connor was mayor, I remember the ribbon cutting vividly.
Can the, can the citizen at home watching now, like just pull that up on their computer like they can for the PWSA legislation that's literally in City Council records, right? So we want to make sure that we're not, you, you can't be accused of doing agreements in closed doors that the public can't see.
Absolutely. Agree completely.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman O'Connor.
All right, I know Dan's going to be late and I'm going to be late. So just two quick things, and I don't know if I heard you say this right or not. With these funds, if the residents vote for it, are you saying there's no matching funds or there's opportunities for matching funds as well? Not, not within city dollars, but outside, there's opportunity...
There is opportunity. We believe...
Right, okay, I misunderstood.
Yeah, we believe people would be interested in providing...
In matching, right.
In leveraging. There's not a commitment or some set out.
Right, there's no money out there right now, but just so everybody knows, because when you said it, I was thinking like, no, I thought I heard the opposite. And then my only other thing, because we're just talking to the Chief of Staff now, nobody else presented yet, I'm sorry. I think the biggest thing is, you know, we have to make it clear that if the residents vote for this, this is not privatizing parks. And my fear with that is all of a sudden, okay, I go to rent skates at Schenley Ice Rink and all of a sudden it's $25. Now people aren't getting opportunities to do something that should be relatively inexpensive. So I just ask that if we're going down this road, and obviously it's up to the residents if they vote for this, that we at council also acknowledge that there will be more funds out there if this passes, that we who set rates, and I know, you know, we've raised rates at certain places before, but we have to make sure that the parks are available for everyone. You know, whether we're going to not only rent, but, you know, ball fields and, you know, equipment and other things like that, that when you talk about privatization, as people have these assumptions out there, that they're not going to be able to use our parks anymore. And I just want to make that clear. Director Gable, you've been a very, very big advocate for this, so I just sort of just wanted to clear that up. Not that we're doing anything, but just in the future that obviously if there are more funds, then people can afford to use this. And again, this is all up to the residents. If the residents want to vote on this, we have to be aware of that. I do have questions, but nobody else has gone yet, so I just wanted to...
I would just say...
No, I just wanted to keep it to, to what we're, what we're on task for right now.
I'll just say, I agree with you completely. You know, again, I would imagine like we do in First T where we have rate control on that, if there was such an example, I can tell you, I can't think of any such example right now. But you know, there's not some secret plan to build a water park that would, someone else would run or something, but you never know what the future holds. But I would think First T would be a model where, yes, we need the help running it, but we need to control it. And I will say, and I said this to Ms. Miller and to Director Gable, things like, you know, any concern out there that suddenly we wouldn't be deciding what Little League teams use our fields and give them the free fields, which we do now, that is, that is not changing. That is a, that is our city function that we're...
I just wanted to make that clear because I know Director does a very good job of it and I just, you know, a lot of people hear that privatization and no more funds, okay, well, if this passes and you get 10 million, well, now all of a sudden you're going to charge me X amount for something. And it's like, well, wait, no, that's not anybody's goal here. We want to make the parks as affordable as they can be for everybody.
Absolutely.
So that was just to the administration and I'll let you continue. Thank you.
Oh, I'm going to continue.
Oh, I know.
Trust me, I'm going to continue with that line. Councilwoman Harris?
Thank you.
And then Erica, did you have...
I'm going to try to keep my questions to you, Dan, and they're going to be tough ones.
That's okay. I welcome it.
How much rad money do we get right now?
Operating or capital would be, first of all, and I would defer to Director Gable on the exact amount for both. Capital this year was probably about two and a half million or...
A million and a half.
Million and a half, okay.
And I believe the operating is around 5.3.
So that's about six, seven million dollars for some of our largest parks.
Correct.
For our five rad parks, that's correct.
Right.
Yes.
Five rad parks, which are our largest parks in the city.
That's correct.
Yeah, it's defined by acreage with rad.
Okay. So we already get $7 million that's allocated just for our parks. Who started this campaign?
Who started? Just to be, the campaign or the conversation about raising, putting a referendum on the ballot?
Putting more taxes on the taxpayers.
I would say Mayor Paduto was the first to say, "We need more money into our parks." And then there were many conversations about how to, to get there, but Mayor Paduto ran in his campaign talking about needing to find partnerships to get more money into our parks.
Okay. And before Mayor Paduto was mayor, how much money were we getting from the nonprofits? The, the least amount of money that we were getting from the nonprofits?
Well, there were, I'm not trying to be a smart aleck, there were, uh, hundreds of years before the mayor, so I don't know what years you're talking about. It ranged from zero to six, I believe, was roughly the range.
Well, I'm talking about, as mayor, six years.
But you said before the mayor, how much did we receive?
This mayor.
Under this mayor, how much did we receive?
Well, nothing.
Right, so you said before the mayor, and I'm asking what, what years, because if you go back to the beginning, what, what years do you want to talk? I believe.
What, the last 10 years, last 15 years?
The least amount of money that we got was 10 million dollars.
That's not accurate at all.
Well, I think it's accurate.
That's not accurate.
I'll ask the controller.
We had many years where we were receiving zero.
I'm not talking about those years. I'm talking about when we first made the agreement with the nonprofits.
I would defer to the controller, but I think it may be around 6 million.
And I'm talking about Pitt, CMU, Duquesne, the hospitals, Carlo, nonprof, all the nonprofits. Um, the last year we got it was the last year under Ravenstone.
Yeah, but it was, it was never as high as 10 million a year.
Go back and look.
It may have been, it may have been in excess of 10 million over a period of years.
No.
But it was never, it was never 10 million.
Okay, let's go back and look at that.
Now, remember, though, in those years, in those most recent years prior to the Paduto administration, UPMC was not participating.
Well, yes, of course.
Yeah, because they were contributing to the, uh.
Yeah, we had some of our smallest nonprofits, and they kept it where we didn't know who they were, but the money was coming in, and we have it in each one of our budget books. I have all the old budget books, so I can show you. So, uh, now, we get a zero amount from any of them, well, excuse me, I think there's a side deal where it don't come into the city, um.
There's no agreement with any nonprofit.
So, there's no agreement. We don't get nothing from any of the nonprofits, and I'm talking to large ones that were involved in giving us money.
There's not a nonprofit agreement with the large nonprofits, whether or not any small amounts come in.
I'm just saying there was.
Yep.
Okay. And that would be a better avenue to go, because 50% of this city, actually, the real estate, they're not paying taxes. There's no taxes.
Correct.
They're using our fire, our police, our paramedics, I could go on and on and on, but that would be a better avenue, I would say, to go than, I mean, as soon as we said we're gonna put a tax on them, they were here donating, and, um, Mayor Paduto would remember that. Uh, and then, how much, how much right now, uh, have we borrowed, um, or should I say bond money?
How much are we bonding? I believe we're borrowing 60 million a year right now, I believe is the.
How much have we in the last six years?
I don't have that number. I'm happy to get it for you. I don't know in six years.
I believe it's around 200 million dollars. And the interest in that's pushed back. This year is the lowest year, and if you look at where we had the highest year, we actually had 52 million dollars extra, if you take it from when we had the highest bonds. And it took forever to pay that off, and the further you push these bonds out, the more it's gonna cost, and we just got out of Act 47. Um, the homeowners, this tax hits the seniors and others on fixed income the hardest. Now, first, we, we had the Carnegie Library tax, um, and people voted yes, so we, as council, said yes, and that, that there is separate, and it says Carnegie Library. Mm-hmm. Last year, we had a private group decide, "Oh, well, Carnegie Library got it, let's get it, too." Ah, they used education, was not Pittsburgh Public Schools, parochial schools, it was to get money. This year, and it's, the commercials, nothing say taxpayers, this is double what Carnegie Library taxes right now, because I think all of our offices got calls when the Carnegie Library taxed, because when people voted yes, they didn't realize that their taxes were going up, and they were voting for their taxes to go up. Um, and it comes here for a vote, so how can you guarantee the taxpayers that it would go to the parks? Council could change that at any time.
Uh, I, I'm not a lawyer, so I, I would get you a legal opinion, because I'm not a lawyer. I don't believe that is accurate. Once it's been passed by referendum by the voters, I don't believe council could, could do that, but I, again, Attorney Lanson, attorney, may have a better interpretation. I, I'm not one.
We had the vote on it, when, when the Carnegie Library tax came out. But talking about those, the hardest going to be hit with this, um, they don't have equal cost of living, their social security is not going up, their pensions aren't going up. What are they gonna choose? Because this is on the homeowner, what are they gonna choose? Are they gonna choose what medicine they're not gonna take, and some have done that already and died? Have you ever watched these people? You can come over my way, watch seniors, looking at the cost and writing down everything that they're buying. So, what would be food that's taken out of their mouth? I, I just don't know how this is justified, particularly when there is so much bond money that's been out there, and parks are something that need to last. Actually, if you talk about, um, programs in parks, are, we used Pittsburgh Public Schools, city of Pittsburgh paid for someone to be there, didn't cost much, and the kids would go there for all kind of activities.
Are you talking about the community enrichment program? I just want to be clear.
No, I'm talking about way before the community enrichment program.
Okay, I just want to be clear.
Okay, I guess I go back a little bit. But I, I just, I just don't know how this could be justified to put this on the homeowners again, when we're not asking anyone that is not paying taxes. I mean, this is gonna be on the homeowner, and, um, who was it? What company or person was it that, uh, got the people out there with petitions? I forgot to ask that question.
I don't know officially, it was the company, it was the Parks Conservancy, it was not the city of Pittsburgh. I can say that.
It was the Conservancy.
Okay, yeah. What company and what person was it?
Councilwoman, I'll give you a chance to ask, uh, questions of the director. I just, do you have any other questions for?
Well, actually, it's related, on who they used. Who'd they use?
If you want to answer it.
So, we used, uh, citizen volunteers, and we hired a company.
And who was the company?
The company, I don't remember the company's name, but they were out of California.
Who was the person that got the company, got that all together? Was his last name Preston?
We actually worked with the Trust for Public Land, um, and.
Preston?
Matt Merriman Preston didn't hire them, we hired them.
No, but was he involved?
He was involved, but not in terms of the selection of the.
Is that the mayor's campaign chairperson?
I don't work on the political side, I don't know who the mayor's campaign chair is.
You know, you know.
No, I actually truly do not know who the mayor's campaign chair is, and I don't believe that.
Okay, I mean, I'm not gonna go much further on this, other than, I like, I love the Parks Conservancy now better than ever. They do a great job, and to raise money instead of for commercials, to raise money for the parks, I think is an excellent deal. And if you remember when you talked about the fountain in my park, um, the five members of council that are usually a yes vote, voted down $5,000 to start a campaign for that fountain. I put in the first $10 million, and thank goodness for the Rooney family, who really helped, and they help our parks out tremendously, if nobody knows that publicly. But I'm not going to look for major prescriptions for the seriously ill. I mean, to get any more taxes put on them, when half of this city is not paying anything and using, I would say, more of our facilities than the homeowners. I mean, maybe that's a little bit of exaggeration, but they use quite a bit, and, um, I, I was watching Andy Sheen on Channel 2, uh, I don't know if you've seen that story where he said, "Since Mayor Paduto became mayor, taxes have increased 84 million dollars." How much of that has gone to the parks' projects?
Again, I can't give you specific numbers. The investment in parks has increased in the Paduto administration, the exact number I don't have in front of me.
I wish you would've came here with a lot more answers, but I want you to get all that for me.
Oh, gladly, yeah.
I would really appreciate it.
Yep.
Um, I think that was my last question for right now.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Um, all I want to say is the rad money's out there, and that's for our five largest parks, $6 million a year. You have a lot of nonprofits out there that don't pay a dime for anything in the city, and there are the nonprofits, and I'd be glad to give you who they are, that would not even have a problem helping out, as long as the largest facilities give money to. I just can't do this, I can't see it. I, I have been going, and, uh, Ms. Miller can tell you that, uh, last night, we had three commun-, I had three community meetings, you went to four. Um, I've been leaving the people know, they don't realize this is a tax increase on the homeowner. They don't realize that at all. And when I went down with this petition group from California, um, they said it was for all the parks, the Connie, everywhere, nothing about paying taxes or your taxes going up. And that's not the way to do it. I mean, Carnegie Library, good deal, okay, but now, every year, and now the city's getting into it, and this is a tax, tax on anyone that owns a home in the city, and this hurts. Some of us are most vulnerable, people that live here. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Strasburger. I apologize, I passed you up before, I didn't realize you had questions.
Thank you. Uh, I, I want to respect your time, Chief Gilman, so, um, please, if there's anything that you need to defer to other, um, to other, to others here at the table, please just let me know. But I am, I'm curious and digging in on when you say that, that, that council will retain control of the, of the flow of money, um, what would that actually look like? How, you know, if this, this referendum passes, if there are matching funds that then do come, um, from, um, outside sources, um, in addition to rad dollars, wha- what does that actually look like when it comes together and, and to council to, to approve or to vote on? Do you know at this point?
So, I, I, no, I don't know at this point. I can, can say that what I would envision, uh, would be some sort of agreement that came before council that laid those ground rules. And again, I'm purely making up numbers for an example, I'm not, not saying this at all, but I would envision some sort of agreement where council says, of the 10 million, roughly 10 million that it's expected to raise, 8 million just goes directly into the operating budget for DPW and Parks and Recreation, 2 million goes into doing these 10, 12, 13, 180 things with the Parks Conservancy and/or other partners. I, I do want to be clear that the referendum legislation is not about the Parks Conservancy, it's about part nonprofit, Parks Partners, I think is the right language. So, it may very well be that you could have some partnership with the Western Pennsylvania Conservancy or others, um, a- as well. It does not have to be limited to one, uh, at all, uh, but that, those agreements would be something that council approved, so in terms of the flow, council would, uh, define that, but no matter what, the money always would come into the city first and foremost, and presumably, some would go into operating and some into any sort of special agreement about maintenance of a specific park or certain functions that would be provided.
Mm-hmm, okay. And then, um, would the kind of determination of the leadership and the management be wrapped up into that, or would that be sort of a separate? This is partially me not knowing the process of what this would look like, and this partially being a newer council member, not knowing how, you know, what existing, um, uh, kind of agreements are in place.
The structure of.
So, the, the, the labor, uh, the, the management of parks, the, um, who's sort of actually doing the work in the parks?
The work in the parks will remain Pittsburgh Public Works.
So, that will, and.
Other than any, you know.
Existing agreements, yeah.
Just like right now, where the Parks Conservancy does Shenley Plaza.
Yeah.
Again, I'm not, but in terms of who is gonna be dragging the ball fields, who's gonna be cutting the grass in the outfield, who's gonna be shoveling the snow on the sidewalks, those are Pittsburgh Public Works jobs, uh, those are our labors, and as I opened with, we'll be hiring more, uh, to do that, but those would be city employees.
Let me, let me, since you brought, we do, we are also maintaining Shenley Plaza.
Yeah, together, yeah.
So, we are not excluded from any of our park assets and maintaining them.
And then, I guess what I'm getting at is there, is there anything that changes, um, you know, I'm not so worried about if this passes, whether it looks like the next year, the next two years. Um, I'm a little concerned about, you know, the possibility of it changing 10 years down the line, 20 years down the line, when many of us might not, you know, be in the same role, so, um, is there something that would be needed, a safeguard, or that could be put into place to guarantee basically that, you know, what we envision it looking like now, or what it is now, remains in place?
So, yeah, any dollars that didn't directly go into the city budget and went into another agreement would be part of an approved agreement by city council. I would imagine such an agreement would expire, it would not be something that had no, no expiration. I, I can't imagine that being proposed or approved by council, could have milestones where things are re-upped in it, but you would not have a in-perpetuity situation.
Okay. Yeah, my, my biggest concerns here are around, you know, the fiduciary responsibility that I have as a council member, so those, those are my only questions for you right now.
Yeah, the, the only thing I would say, and, you know, I think I do have a little bit of a unique, having been on, on both sides, not that other people previously haven't, um, I, I will tell you, the most eye-opening thing, I think, to me in this new position, uh, and is around how we spend our dollars in a most equitable fashion. Uh, I was very fortunate for 15 years to represent and work in the district you represent and see, mostly because rad and large parks, uh, you know, where I grew up playing was Highland and Shenley and Mellon and Frick, uh, Whitman, which wasn't so great, but Willby again, uh, really good facilities. Um, I've spent a lot of time working with residents in communities that just have not seen that, and when, you know, just the latest where I spent a lot of time, uh, with the Leamington, Lincoln-Leamington community at Chadwick, uh, where those dollars have just not been invested from a capital perspective, I'm not talking about the operating, what are the men and women who work for us, I'm talking about a capital prioritization, it did not happen. Uh, and one of the, the things that we envision this doing is really going to a more equitable, uh, a more data-driven, uh, recommendation to council, still council's control of the budget, but from an equity standpoint, what does this do? From an environmental and stormwater standpoint, are we making the investments, you know, as Councilman Grosslaw is saying, if we're doing this, how does it impact A-22, or are we just putting in more asphalt? You know, what does that do? And, and also, you know, looking to, to, from the equity standpoint, to honor, uh, the mayor's pledge, which is to get it so every child lives within a 10-minute walk of a quality park or playground, which we've vastly improved since the mayor took office, I think we're up to 91% this year, uh, but we want it at 100%. Uh, and so, some of us will, will be trying to get those dollars into those parks. Councilwoman Harris rightly pointed out, we're getting millions of dollars, uh, for our rad parks, uh, which is just, you know, not representative where a huge chunk of our, our city plays. There is no rad park, uh, in the West, there's one in.
Mount Washington.
Yeah, truly, there's Emerald View, but in the, the far west end, there is not. Um, there's one in the north side, um, so there, there's. So there are a ton of neighborhood parks. We have 165, and we're talking about five that we fund through rad. That's 160. And I would say too, you know, the other thing I've learned is how many parks, small groups, you know, out of our divisions are responsible for maintaining. It's a tremendous lift. And yes, you know, we can always reprioritize, Councilwoman Harris rightly pointed out, we borrowed more, you know, dollars. Revenue thankfully is up, I think, you know, and we've been very fiscally responsible in keeping with the support of all of city council, the bond ratios and debt ratios in the right place with the city controller as well, who's helped champion that coming out of Act 47. But when you look at the needs, and we'll really get into this in the coming weeks, we have desperate fire truck needs right now. We have desperate facility needs. We have desperate stormwater, landslides, paying our workers who haven't been paid what they should have, you know, since 2003. The list goes on and on. I know you all have them in your own districts. The reality is without additional revenue, the parks that I'm talking about where we're not seeing the investment are not going to see the number of labors hired we need to maintain them better. They're not going to see the dollars going into the green infrastructure or the redoing of the baseball field or the playgrounds to make them safe or spray parks so kids have somewhere to go in the summer. That just isn't real without additional revenue coming in. It's not real when they spend $86 per capita on parks.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. So I know that everyone here, I'm going to give you all a chance to make a comment or an opening statement. I apologize that it's taking so long, but I just really want to ask just a few questions. You had mentioned that the money would come through the city and through city council. I've also heard that there would be a committee in place, and I'd like to know a little bit more about that.
So again, there is no agreement, and any agreement would come before council. I don't want to repeat myself, but I just think it's critically important. I will say we have talked about that if there are dollars that council would allocate to the Parks Conservancy in these new partnerships, that that would not just go directly to the Parks Conservancy where the Parks Conservancy Board controlled it, but it would be separate where there would be a group that had a majority city employees, including council representation, overseeing it. We wouldn't want those funds in our mix where it just goes into, you know, quote unquote, Parks Conservancy bank account. That, I think that is the committee that you've heard about. That is not structured. That is not set, but that is something we've talked about is could there be almost a Parks Governing Board that's appointed, confirmed, involves city council, is a majority public that oversees some of that as well? But still, they would not have funding without council's allocation.
So my concern is, you know, I've sit on the Housing Opportunity Fund and the Land Bank Board, and I know that, you know, you structure a board to get the results you want. And so I don't know how much we'd actually have a say, you know, even though the board would be structured in such a way, I don't know how long that would, excuse me, especially with the new council coming up, you know, I don't know that, you know, you're not going to have more of a say. So for that, I have a little bit of concern for that part. Excuse me, but so I definitely would like to, am more interested in that, and I'd like to know a little bit more about that. Now for me, part of my concern has been with the Parks Conservancy has been Grandview Avenue and the agreement that we had in place that the Parks Conservancy was to work on Grandview. And in conversations with the mayor's office, I found out that there was a lot of confusion over this whole, this whole agreement. And part of my, I would like to know what your understanding was in terms of that, of the Grandview Avenue partnership and the agreement between the MWCDC and Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy, because it was my understanding that even though, you know, that you and I and Director Gable and Director Ricks, the various community groups, MWCDC and even the neighbors of the mountain, all took a lot of heat for the condition of Grandview Avenue. But according to this agreement, that it was supposed to be the responsibility of Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy. So, and I have the agreement here, and also in the agreement, it talks about how there's a non-disclosure statement, how you're not allowed to share it publicly. So why would we even enter into an agreement with an organization with that disclosure, number one? Number two, what was your understanding of it?
Unfortunately to say, I don't have one. I learned about this from you when you and I talked on the phone a few nights, I'm sorry, a few nights ago, a couple of weeks ago one night about it. It's not something I'm familiar with and I haven't read these, but I certainly would be happy to and have that conversation with you and publicly. I just, I truly don't know. That predates my being in this position by a long time.
So that's my concern, if they're not taking care of some of the issues that we have agreements for and things that we've talked about publicly, why are we considering even giving them even further responsibility in the city? And quite frankly, I just, you know, I vehemently oppose the tax because I feel that if people want to volunteer their money and donate their money, put it on the back of the tax bill, let them donate their money to whatever they'd like. Maybe somebody'd like to donate to public safety, somebody'd like to donate to the parks. I think a lot of people would want to donate to the parks. I would donate to the parks. I don't like the idea of the way we're going about this because I feel that there's a lot of times we are really, I've watched, it's more like the tail wagging the dog here than the, than when I see the agreement with Pittsburgh, the work with Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy, they're telling DPW what projects we're working on and what needs done, and the director's expected to live up to these things with a very short staff and not, not really with all the funding that he needs, you know, either. And yet I see Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy budget and the director making more than double what our director makes and more than both our city parks director and our public works director combined. And so when I see that, it makes me think that there's a lot to be questioned here, and I feel that this is being rushed. I don't know that I would oppose it if I had more time to look through things and hear from the public. It's the way it's been done from the very beginning. I oppose. I don't like that we are pushing it forward for this election and, you know, the residents had really just heard about it. We're having these community meetings, these listening tours, but it's more the residents listening to the presentation than us listening to the residents. And so I'm thinking about calling for a public hearing as well so we can actually hear from the public, but I don't know that I, you know, I think that the public should be attending these meetings and they should be bringing up their concerns. So for me, I want to say that I've watched the parks and the ball fields maintained all through Act 47. I ran an athletic association. I know what we do in the fields. I know what we've done in the past, and I know what we're doing now. And I think the director and others are doing the best they can, but we had heard rumors that the administration had told the workers, and I want you to clarify this for the public, that they told the workers not to do the work on the fields and in the parks so that we would see, so the public would see the lack of maintenance and cry for this, you know, tax and cry for this funding and support the funding. Now, I know Director Gable told me he would never make that order.
Yeah, and I've told you this right, and I may be abundantly clear, that is an absolute 100% bold-faced lie that would never come out of anybody in the administration's mouth, and it is backed up, quite frankly, by the work you see being done. And I can go through every district from Townsend to Whiteman to Lewis with Councilman O'Connor and McBride. There's more capital work being done in our parks this year than in the last 20 years. So it's not backed by data. It's not backed by what we see on the ground and it's, you know, and not towards you because you and I have talked about this, but to the people saying it, who you and I have talked about it. It's insulting and I think politically motivated and just nonsense. We would never, ever, anyone in this administration gives such a directive that hurt people in our communities.
So I do see ball, I do see playgrounds getting renovated, but I do see some, some lack of maintenance on some of the ball fields, and we do have received complaints about the ball fields. And I wonder if that is also partly because we're using those parks for free for the athletic associations. And I want to make sure that there's not some agenda to push the athletic associations either off the fields or into putting the money in themselves or to do some things because we've watched a lot of, there have definitely been a lot of changes in the ball fields, but we have also seen a lot of great work in the playgrounds. So I want to be clear, there's two separate things going on.
So I think, two things. Number one, you know, we've remained committed to the primary, the preferential access for our youth associations to our fields through the entire Paduto administration. That has not changed. And I think the lurking variable, and you and I have talked about it, and Director Gable's heard me express my frustration at some of the field conditions, it's water. You're talking about last year being the rainiest year in the history of Pittsburgh and this year on track to be break that record. And when you have that kind of water on your fields, the fields are not going to be as a good condition. But what we have done is invested in laser grading to do in-house, taught all of our employees how to laser grade. Councilwoman Gross saw the benefit of it.
I have seen that.
At Natoli, thank you, Councilwoman, Natoli Field where it's done, so you're seeing it.
So I have seen that, but what I'm seeing, what I'm, my concerns are, I've seen steps that are falling apart. I've seen railings coming down, trees, which we know have been an issue across the city. So those are some of the things that I see. And so I just want to make sure, I mean, if we're having a difficult time getting to those things, that's one thing. If we're giving a directive to not do those things, to start, you know, having a response from the public different than what they would be if the pitfields were being maintained, then that's another story. So I just wanted to be clear, I wanted to make, make sure that that was addressed.
Absolutely, it would never happen with this administration.
Okay.
And if someone did, they wouldn't have a job.
Okay. So with that said, I'm going to give everyone a chance to make opening statements. I want to thank you for being here with us.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman.
A lot longer than you had anticipated, 45 minutes later than you had anticipated.
It's okay.
But thank you very much. And I'm going to start with the controller, if you don't mind, and then work our way down with opening statements. Is that okay?
Okay. Thank you very much.
And I will say we're also joined by the solicitor so she can address Councilwoman Harris's concern. Solicitor, if you'd come to the table.
Let me first thank you, Michael Lamb, City Controller. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today, and let me make a couple of comments first. I think everyone agrees that parks need resources and that we don't give enough resources to parks. But that could also be said for streets and for stormsores and for slopes and for facilities and just about everything else in this city. I mean, we've gone through a long time of deferred maintenance on just about everything in this city. We're finally coming out of a horrible financial situation to a much more stable financial situation that allows us for the first time to have a real capital budget and to start to do capital projects. And the fact that the parks are going to have to catch up, just like everybody else is, is just the reality. I'm not doubting for a minute that $10 million isn't even the right number. And I certainly don't doubt the, or have, or question the work of the Parks Conservancy. I've been a longtime advocate for the Parks Conservancy and a financial supporter personally. And so I support the work that they do. The problem with this tax to me is that the timing is wrong. You know, we live in a city that is among the most highest taxed for real estate purposes in the country, and so now we're throwing another tax on. We raised taxes in 2012 for the library. We raised taxes in 2014 as a millage adjustment here at city council. We raised a realty transfer tax last year. We're raising it again next year. We continue to tax real estate in this city to a point where, in a city that continues to lose population. As much as we talk about certain neighborhoods growing, the city as a whole continues to lose population every day. And that's going to continue and for a while. And so it becomes a real problem for me as we talk about a new tax, a tax that, when you talk about our taxpayers, a tax that will escape the homestead exemption. And so there's no homestead exemption on this portion of the tax, just like with the library tax. And so when I hear the chief of staff talk about the reality and things that he's heard, well, the sum of the things he's heard, he's heard from me because I think it's unconscionable for us to go to our residents and ask for a tax increase when our largest employers, our large nonprofits are contributing zero. Now, he suggests that that's not reality. Well, that's absolute reality. What's reality is that in 2013, our mayor campaigned for the job of mayor on the platform that he was going to negotiate a new deal with our large nonprofits that was going to vastly increase the amount of money that we were going to get from our large nonprofit institutions. And we've gotten a goose egg since then. We're six years in now, $0 unconscionable that we would now go to our taxpayers and ask them for more money. And what I learned today is even, maybe even more troubling. The idea that there is now, and we want to talk about reality, the idea that there is a saturation buy on television right now promoting the Parks Conservancy and its relationship with the city and to suggest that that's not part of this campaign. Now, that may be some strained legalese, and I'm sure there's a great legal opinion to suggest that that's true, but we know that's not reality. We know that, you know, we know as, we've all run campaigns. You know, the first ad you do is you introduce yourself and let people know who you are. And if you're an incumbent, you tell them, maybe remind them who you are. That's what this ad is. This ad is reminding people who, what Parks Conservancy has done, the great work that they've done, and reminding them that they have a partnership with the city. It's to set up the next ad, which will be the advocacy ad for this question, to suggest that that's not campaign-related. Now, that's what's not reality. And the fact that we, I'm running this year, I'm on the ballot this year, I have to file a report every month telling you everybody who gave me money, every, and where I spent that money. The fact that they escaped that, I mean, I appreciate that the director has suggested that they're going to comply with the law. Well, I hope so because there's virtually no law. I mean, there's very little requirement with respect to disclosure and reporting on these kind of, on these kind of races. So it's troubling to me. And I will tell you this, that, like I said, I'm not out banging the drum on this thing, but I am going to vote against it, and I'm going to vote against it for the reason I just relayed to you. I'm also going to vote against it because I think to me, when I look at what we're doing financially in the city, we're doing pretty well. And while we may not do it on the timeframe that some people want to see it, we're going to be able to get there, and we're going to be able to fund these kind of projects. And we're getting better and better every year, and we're generating surplus dollars every year. How do you go back to your taxpayers and ask for a tax increase when you're generating so much money over and above what they're contributing now? And so I would, I would, I have those problems. But for the last part, I would say this, the answer that you're always going to get and you're always going to come back to is, why don't you just leave it in the hands of the voters? Put it on the ballot and just let it, you know, that's the fair way. Just leave it on the ballot, and I get that. And I, we live in a rural community and I'm all for initiative and referendum. But what's going to happen over the next two months is that there's going to be a massive campaign on television and no counterweight to that campaign. And so while they can, they can go out and say, who knows what will be in those ads and what will be said in those ads? I can tell you this, the track record's not very good because what the campaign they did to get the signatures was misinformation upon misinformation of the people who were circulating those petitions. You know, if that kind of thing goes unchallenged, how's that fair? I mean, how's that, how's it, well, just let the voters decide, leave it on the ballot. We're talking about likely a record low turnout in November and a campaign, you know, if it's not $1 million, it's going to be close, of advocacy campaign, particularly when you add in this money that's being suggested is not part of the advocacy campaign. And so I'm concerned about it. I really do believe that, I really hope that we can enlighten voters across the city as to what this vote really means. I still stand by what I said earlier in the year, which is we're generating the kind of dollars we are, we have the ability to direct a lot more money into parks than we're doing right now, and I still find the increase unnecessary.
Thank you, Controller. Director, do you have any statement?
Yes, good afternoon. Thanks for allowing me to be here. I think that if I put on my city parks director hat, would I like to see an influx of additional monies regardless of the source to improve programs and outreach for youth and teens and families and senior program? Of course I would. As the chief mentioned, our trip to Minneapolis was enlightening. The structure there is completely different, but the results of what you see are really tangible. To the controller's point, I think it's, it's important that this process play out, and for some, it doesn't seem like it's been transparent enough. But the voters will decide. I think that's important. I think everyone at the tables realizes that the library tax was a quarter mill. This is a little bit more than that. Those of us that are fortunate enough to consider voting for this, perhaps that's not a strain on our monthly budget or annual budget, but for some, it might be. I guess my vote, I've always treated it kind of privately. I think that's my right, but for certain, having grown up in a community that is, that has and surrounded by neighborhood parks and not having direct, direct access to rad parks, of which my department receives rad monies, those monies weren't trickling into the neighborhood parks for some time. Again, to the controller's point, to the chief's point, perhaps that will happen in time, and perhaps it is with existing city tax dollars that are coming in now. But we all know that there's a need for it, and if there's some, an equity kind of matrix that gets us there, I think that's an important consideration. So I'm for park improvement. I, I mean, there's, there's no one that isn't. And to echo everyone's sentiment, I think the work that the PPC does and has done is really admirable, and in working closely in tandem with Director Gable and his team, you're starting to see some results. You're seeing the influx of money that's committed through capital monies from the mayor and the administration make a difference. It's happening. So I hope that's helpful in some way to give you my perspective. I mean, I kind of have to look at it from a citizen's standpoint, but from someone that manages the city parks department, yes, we don't really do much as far as maintenance and public support in the parks. That falls more to the Department of Public Works and to PPC, but it's certainly something that is passionate for me personally and for the, I think, the whole of the city parks department. whole of the City Parks Department. So neighborhood parks have been ignored. It would be really great to see an investment in parks for these people, and I guess the voters will decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Director.
Thank you again.
I'm going to say Director, Director.
Sorry. Thank you, Councilwoman O'Kale Smith. You know, I am one of the first people who, whenever I talk to people, I talk about the work the city staff does to take care of the system with the resources they have. It's incredible what they do with the limited resources they have. And I know the city has struggled for decades financially, and it's amazing to me what they do with the resources that they have, the limited resources. Our position as a conservancy and mine as a CEO is, how do we improve those parks? How do we do it in a stronger partnership with the city? It is not about us as a conservancy driving what the city does, it's how do we work together in partnership? And that has been the work that we've done. Over our 23-year history, we have raised over $124 million that has gone back into the city parks. Any of the improvements we do are owned by the city. We don't own a single asset. Of all the dollars that we bring in, it has all gone back and owned by the city. Yes, we may manage and operate elements of the park system, but we don't own anything. They are publicly owned by the residents and owned by the city. And yes, parks are for everyone. I am a public sector employee, person. I have worked in the public sector over 30 years in my career. I'm a firm believer that parks are public spaces and need to be retained as public spaces. Absolutely critical. I also believe, as Director Chapman said, that the history of investments, not only here, but in every urban system in the country, is that neighborhood parks don't have the resources that regional parks have. The ability for them to generate revenue from other sources in neighborhood parks simply isn't there, you know? And I think a good descriptor of the differential here is the resources that are available to maintain our regional parks. We have 69, Mike has 69 full-time maintenance employees to maintain five regional parks. He has 33 full-time employees to maintain 160 parks, which are the non-regional parks. That disparity is striking of the need for investments in our neighborhood parks. The work that we have been done, have been doing throughout the time that I have been in here, has been absolutely in partnership with the city. We've worked closely with DPW staff, City Park staff, OMB planning, throughout the whole process in terms of analyzing the data, making sure if there were discrepancies that we would work through those, so that the information that's going out to the public has been done in partnership. Yes, I may be leading the presentations, but at every meeting, there is a city staff person. And in deference to Mike, you know, before we started the meetings, I asked him if he wanted to present with me. He said no, he would rather just be there to answer questions. So I just want to provide that clarification as well. I also believe really strongly that parks in urban communities are critical to the well-being of residents. Documentation research demonstrates the importance of how important it is that people live within a 10-minute walk of a park, that their health is better, their ability to connect with their neighbors is better. I can provide you a ton of research about that, how it improves environmental sustainability, improves air quality, water quality, which are major issues in the city because of investments in parks. There was a study done in Philadelphia of two neighborhoods. One neighborhood that had tree canopy in their neighborhood, another that had very little tree canopy. The temperature difference in the summer in those two neighborhoods was 20 degrees. So parks are not just about people, but they're also about what they do for communities and neighborhoods. They drive economic development in cities. They strengthen a city. And so from that perspective, parks are really integral to the livelihood of a city and how well cities do and how residents, how well residents do in cities. And so our attempt and our work, from the very beginning, when Meg Shever started the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy, was, how can we improve the parks in the neighborhoods that people live in? How can we assist the city with making the parks what they used to be? You know, one of the things I hear often in all the public meetings that go are seniors who remember the parks when they were in great shape and remember what they did as kids and want the parks for their kids and their grandkids to be what they were when they were kids. And so that really is all of our attempt, is to make these improvements in our parks so that people have resources that are, make their lives better.
Director. Director Gable?
Sure. I was only going to come to answer some questions that are being directed my way, but I think I need to speak to some of the comments made, is that we've had a great relationship with Parks Conservancy over the years. I would not say that tails wagging the dog. We are the driving force behind most of the capital work. And none of the projects take off until both parties bring the funding to the table. Yes, there's a few projects where the conservancy had a real initiative. It started with their signature projects in each of the parks, but, you know, the projects don't happen until we both agree on the scope of work and the funding is there. So, you know, Westinghouse Memorial stands out. You know, we had the funding in place, but needed to have the conservancy raise the other million dollars. It took a while to do that, and that project did not happen until they raised the money. So we believe that, you know, the intent behind the conservancy in the beginning was to basically, in addition to other things, was to help raise the capital dollars to help improve our parks, and we believe they're continuing to do that. Additionally, they've provided so many other things with regards to our staff. They've taken our staff on to other cities to see how other maintenance operations work. They've taken our, employees have gone to Ogilvy to be educated in terms of Parks Maintenance Management School. So they've helped in so many ways where the city wasn't able to help provide that funding. So it's been a great relationship, and I'm here to basically answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Director. And Solicitor, Councilwoman Harris is no longer here, so I apologize for dragging her down here. So it's up to you. Do you want to say anything?
I don't have a statement, but I'm happy if council members have questions.
Does anyone have any questions? I don't want to keep the solicitor, I mean, for the solicitor.
I do, actually, if I want.
Okay. I just don't want to keep her here if she's not.
Sorry, thank you for being here, Solicitor Hilton. If the, between you or anyone else at the table or the city clerk's office, I don't believe we read the text of the referendum. Right? And so the signatures were gathered in order to put very specific language on the ballot. And we don't have that language in front of us. Who has it?
It's the Parks Conservancy's referendum. I would say they would have it.
For you. Well, this is the post-agenda, so this is the time to share it, because this is, you know, here fact-finding for the public. So we, I think, before we finish this post-agenda, I want it read into the record.
I'm sorry, I was not aware that I needed to bring that. And I tried to come prepared for this post-agenda.
It was the sentence that was at the top of every petition.
Could we get that? Could we get a copy? Could you send something?
Absolutely. I'm sure somebody in your office could just text you a copy of the petitions, right? I mean, they could literally just snap a photo. I mean...
And the Director did ask me what was needed and...
Yeah, I'm sorry. And, I mean, so this is, I mean, you know, we can call Allegheny County, actually looked on the Allegheny County Elections Department site now, because it's now, they are in charge of it, right? Because the petitions were collected and submitted. So Allegheny County Elections has to put it on the ballot exactly the way it appeared at the top of every petition.
Correct.
And I, I actually was, like, texting my staff and, like, somebody get me the sentence or two, because this is, I think it's important. You know, we typically read, you know, our own legislation, if that's what's being discussed.
Yeah. I apologize, Councilmember Gross. I, again, I did not know exactly what to come prepared for.
Yeah, but, I mean, otherwise, we're kind of just, like, talking around, and it, which is okay to talk about lots of topics, but we don't want to...
So we're going to try to get you a copy of it.
I have a staff person who's going to get it for me.
Somebody can get it, right, in the back? We've got people back in the clerk's office.
Our clerk's office is going to try to get it.
Yeah, okay, thank you, appreciate it. I did not see, again, I did try to do my own homework, and I did not see it on the county elections website, which is a shame. I think it should be there as well. All right, so that was the only question I had for Solicitor. I don't know, have other questions?
Let me know if you have them in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Okay. Any other questions?
For all members?
For anyone, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. So if I don't mind, Councilwoman Strasburger, do you have questions you're waiting to ask?
I have a couple of things, of statements to share, but no, no questions.
Okay, great. Yeah, if you don't mind. I wrote down a couple of facts that I thought were also kind of worthy of repeating. I think, Ms. Miller, you said, five rad parks have 69 full-time employees, Director Gable, and then there's, like, 185 neighborhood parks, and we only have 39 full-time employees assigned? Did I write those down right?
There's, I think, Ross, it's mine, and parks combined, somewhere around 69 to 70 employees. There's an unspecified amount of part-time and seasonal employees that are with Director Chapman. And then the balance, 33 employees, take care of the other 160 parks.
Right, right. So I just want to, you know, I think, also be sure to say that we do all feel the need every day, the under-resourcing of our, state of our parks, the lack of support for recreation programming. I not only think we should be maintaining our ballfields better, I wish we could support these citizen leagues, right? I think it's a shame that the onus and all the budget and the fundraising and the volunteer time is on the sports leagues, who provide so much important programming. Councilwoman Smith and I also always share this. We really have some of the highest participation in leagues and great parents who just are so devoted, for decades, to our neighborhood kids and have hundreds and hundreds of kids and families involved with leagues in our districts. We're very fortunate, and we feel badly because we're constantly having to advocate and lobby the administration for those improvements that are causing them to miss game time or to create, you know, safety and all those kinds of things. So sure, we all want those dollars. And I do respect that the Parks Conservancy's job is to advocate for those parks. But it is the job of this table to make decisions about what is the right use of funds, not just for parks, but also for, for example, other kinds of public health, like replacing leadwater service lines, creating public safety around issues with policing, creating affordable housing opportunities, making sure that we have equity across a variety of social issues. And that is why we have local government. And if you are not elected, then the citizen doesn't have the right to come yell at you, right? And they do have the right to come yell at us. That's why we're here, right? They elect us or they unelect us. And that's why we have this room, and that's why we have these kinds of hearings. And so it gives me pause to say that, like any other advocacy group, yes, your job is to advocate for the parks. And we are grateful for the many years of, again, the design, build, and fundraising that has been a great partnership and for the park, the acreage of park that we're very, very proud of, that is really an asset. It really is an asset for the whole region, and it's an asset for the city for generations to come. I will reiterate that I am cautious about what I've heard today about their already existing operate and maintain leases, basically, the franchising, in a way, of park space that is beyond city council control, right? I don't think that city council or any city employee issued the permit for the Shenley Plaza to close for a wedding recently, right? Was that permitting through our permit?
Yes. We have absolutely no authority to issue permits. Any permitting that's done in parks, even at Shenley Plaza, where we manage, is done by the city.
So somebody just walks to the permit desk and says, I want to close down Shenley Park for a week?
They have to submit a permit application and go through the special, whatever committee it is that the city has that issues permits. We do not have the authority to issue permits in parks.
The table can describe to me how that actually happened. That was not what I understood.
The event is, it goes through the special event committee.
I'm glad I asked, because this is not what I expected to hear.
It goes through the special event committee, which is made up of all the departments around the city. Director Chapman, myself, we have representatives who sit on that committee, but that special event committee makes the decision for special events that occur around the city.
Okay, so at some point... So, okay, maybe no one had thought of it before? Or has that ever happened before?
What's that?
That Shenley Plaza closed for a wedding?
I'm not aware. I'm not aware that any event happened like that at that location in the past.
Okay, so this is, yeah, this is new information to me. I'm glad I asked the question. So, again, so if you want to have your wedding in any public building or place or street or anyplace, then you go, it would be like to the, submit it, you can find it on the city website, the Special Events Committee.
As far as I know, every event...
How does the citizen make this application?
Every event, even the weddings that occur in Mellon Park at the Wald Garden, go through a special event committee, because it's unknown what its impact will be on the park or the surrounding location. So all those events go through the special event committee.
Okay.
And so the decision might be for the park, might be the decision of both Ross and my representative, but we don't make the call about road closures, and that's another department, might be public safety, might be doming. So that's why it's a, representatives from all departments in the city of Pittsburgh on that committee.
All right. So this is maybe part of the confusion, then. Again, I don't think, and again, I'm going to ask our clerk's office, right? Theirs, their job is to keep all public record preserved for, in perpetuity, right? We've got the records from 200 years ago, and we've got the records from yesterday. So I'm assuming, or maybe I will ask here publicly, do they have a copy of that co-op agreement? Because if I had been able to read it, then I would have understood that that was not the Parks Conservancy's decision. And so this is back to this issue of these co-op agreements. They, they just shouldn't be done behind, they should be on the record, and they're not. Is, or again, and if I'm wrong, correct me.
They are, actually. Any agreement...
Where are they?
I don't know where they are in the city.
I don't think they're on the record.
Well, I can tell you...
I believe, this is going back 23 years, I'm pretty sure that I do believe it's on the record.
Can we try to find then? So again, I'm happy to stand corrected. Let us, let us try to find it in our legislative record, and again, I'm looking down past you, Director Gable, to this, our clerk's office.
Yeah, I mean, we have brought very minor agreements up. We believe it's council's right to know who we're entering into agreements with. I can't speak for prior administrations. I can only speak, I've only been the director since 2014, and I can assure you, we are bringing our agreements up to council for you to all approve.
Um, no, we have, okay, but we can take this offline, but it is an avenue that I don't want to have entirely offline. We don't have to cover it all today. But there have been many resolutions that I've been uncomfortable with, because it said pre-authorizing the administration to enter into a cooperative agreement. And I've said, I'm not, I'm uncomfortable with this. And again, there is, I've been harping on this a little while about kind of contracting and how these decisions are made. And sure, if it's just about, like, which face painter is going to show up at what time for the art cart, we don't need to be all that nitty, to use a Pittsburgh word, right? That is not the role of city council. But when it is about leasing, if we're going to have this threshold that needs to be aired and discussed about how far, where are we putting this line in the sand between what a partner does and what the public needs to know, then those agreements need to be on the record. And if they are, and we just haven't been able to find them, then let's find them and all know where they are. I also have off of the Parks Conservancy website, just placed in front of me, but a wonderful council staffer from Councilwoman Coghill's office, the actual language. Shall I have the clerk read the staffer's language instead of me? So I'm going to pass this down. It's the actual language of the referendum.
We'll pass it down to you.
And I know we've been here a while, so I'm going to stop taking up time. I apologize, Councilwoman Strasburger. Thank you.
Introduce yourself for the public, so they know that you're the clerk.
Hello, my name is Lisa Chris, Supervisory Clerk. This is from the PPC website. Shall the Pittsburgh Home Room Charter, Home Room Charter be amended to establish a dedicated Parks Trust Fund beginning in the 2020 to improve, maintain, create, and operate public parks, improve park safety, equitably fund parks in underserved neighborhoods throughout Pittsburgh? Be funded with an additional .5 mil levy, $50 on every $100,000 of assessed real estate value. Secure matching funds and services from a charitable City Parks Conservancy and assure citizen participation and full public disclosure of spending.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry we put you on the spot like that, but I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Do you still have the floor?
No, I've saved the floor. I'm well done. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
Sure, I'll just say a few things. I'm happy for anyone to respond or not. These aren't really questions, but I'm not someone who will talk and not let you respond. I'm happy to have you respond because this is the conversation. So generally, I really believe in the power and the importance of parks. I am privileged to live in a location where I have, and I chose to live in a location and buy a house that has access to green space and parks. They happen to be regional parks and so, you know, they're beautiful. It's Shenley and Frick Park. It's incredible that I get to spend four to five days a week there. And I understand that this referendum asks for, you know, in some ways, the most privileged to, it's an equalizing effect, for those who are the most privileged and have the most to be able to help those with the least and to provide increase in funding to parks that don't receive RAD funding, aren't regional parks, and have seen a disinvestment because of that. But I also recognize that not every homeowner is privileged. Not every homeowner has, you know, is high income necessarily, that there are those on fixed incomes and that there are those for whom this would be a burden. And I also recognize that, you know, this is also another strike against Pittsburgh when it comes to those who might be looking to buy their first home or their second home and raise families here. And is it Pittsburgh or is it Aspen Wall or is it Pittsburgh or is it, you know, Mount Lebanon? And, you know, it gets, it's just one more reason that they perhaps wouldn't buy in Pittsburgh. We really, really want those families here. We really want that constituency here and it does hurt our attractiveness. So I get all of these things. And so I'm just going to have to continue to, to look at the numbers, think about this, talk to as many people as possible because I see both sides here. I'll also just say that I do wish the process had been a little bit different. It's echoing a little bit of what Councilwoman Kail Smith, you were saying. This started as a listening session and it was a listening session. I mean, it was beautifully run. You heard from the community and you came back and you presented what you heard and made a list of criteria and priorities and prioritize the parks, which is something that we now have, the priority of parks based on a number of factors. And that's wonderful. But because of the ballot initiative having been announced halfway through this listening session, I think the tone shifted a little bit from a listening session to, we heard you, here's what we're reporting, but here's also us selling you on the idea of a ballot initiative, even if it was sort of unspoken. To me, you know, I think it would have been really helpful had it, had the listening session played out in full and then perhaps, you know, an effort to raise as much money outside of taxpayer dollars as possible and then perhaps a future election, this being raised as a possibility when all other options were exhausted. I understand, I don't know, I haven't been party to these discussions, I understand it doesn't always work that way, that sometimes, you know, trying to leverage funds from one place results in the need for action now in another way. So I understand that that could have been the case, but that's just kind of my view from the outside. But ultimately, you know, I'm a champion of parks and I want every child in this city to be able to have access to green space and beautiful parks. I want every person in this city to have access to parks. So I want to be thinking long and hard about this. I understand that it's not council's vote, it's the public's vote. But I also understand that, you know, our constituents are looking to us to ask the questions and to make decisions and to represent them in a vocal way. So, thank you all for being here, I really appreciate your time.
Thank you, Councilwoman Controller.
I just want to comment on, or make a comment about what you said with respect to equity. And you're right, I mean, this is an opportunity to ensure some additional funding for the smaller parks and, you know, other than just the regional parks. And that's clearly part of the messaging of the campaign. But make clear, there's nothing requiring that in this initiative, right? There's nothing requiring that money gets spent in the smaller parks. And my guess is that when this, if this funding is approved, a large chunk of it will still be spent in the regional parks rather than in the smaller parks. So I appreciate you recognizing that, but there's nothing requiring that to happen.
And that's, you know, that's why I was sort of getting to the nitty-gritty of, in asking Chief Gilman for answers around safeguards, you know? There could be all of the best intentions now and I actually fully trust that this administration and the Parks Conservancy and everyone, you know, represented in this effort today would prioritize equity. I don't have a concern about today, I have, you know, potential concerns about the future and other leadership in the future and whether equity would be front and center, say, 15, 20 years from now. That's my, that's my concern. I'm not concerned about the intention of those here today.
So it's my turn now, so thank you both for being here and for all my colleagues that were here today. And thank you for sitting through all this. But for me, when I hear the comments about equity and how all neighborhoods should have great parks, well, some of my most poor neighborhoods have the best parks. You know, Sheridan has a great, huge park, Elliot has the great overlook, Mount Washington, which is CDBG eligible, has a great park, you know, the trails in Emerald View, and Ferrywood has a great park. And so those are some of my neighborhoods that struggle a little bit more financially than others. So I don't necessarily think that this is all about equity because I think you have to know the neighborhood and you have to know the city of Pittsburgh and the district that I represent to know that there's some neighborhoods that have some really great parks and some of our more wealthy neighborhoods don't even have a park. So, you know, like Ridgemont doesn't even have a playground or anything like that. So I think that there's, I think it depends on the neighborhood and the area, and it has nothing to do with income, it just has, that's where the park, the neighborhood was built around that park. So for that part, I want to make sure I clarified that. But my concern has also been that there's, with the, when people keep saying that, you know, residents are going to vote and people don't understand that council members don't vote against the residents. If the residents are voting for something, we typically vote for it because it's our residents, it's their signal to us that this is what they want. That's their opportunity to speak up and have their voice heard. And now you can say that, okay, your neighborhood did not, your area that you represent did not vote for, so you're not voting for it. But for you to vote, for a council member to vote against a referendum is saying we're not listening to our constituents. So if you care about this, you need to get out and vote one way or the other, however you feel about it. So, because it is not solely up to council, because, you know, I could vote no, but eight other members could vote in favor. So just so you know, you have to get out and vote. And my concern is with the library tax, I think a lot of students voted and we knew to target the students. And when Paul Supowicz came into a meeting with you Director and to my office, or in to meet with Councilwoman Gross and I, and was lobbying in support, well, seemed to be lobbying in support of the tax, it was concerning to me because it tells me that that's where we're going again. We're going to the universities with the kid, with a lot of students who do not pay the tax, who will not pay the tax because they're not homeowners. And so it's again, going to saddle the residents, the same residents over and over again. And to be lobbied by a university who's not paying a tax, for our residents to pay a tax was just appalling to me. So that probably was one of the first things that really got me a little bit more than angry about the whole situation. And I think that, you know, and we know that the university students do use the parks, but if the universities aren't paying for it, if they really want this great park and they really want this, then put some money up. I mean, it's that simple. I mean, we'd be glad to accept the money, I'm sure. And I think without our, we know now that our foundations are putting so much money into the city and I don't know how we would do some of the things that we are doing now without them. And so, you know, I appreciate it, but I also draw that line where I think that there's a little bit too much of private, you know, foundations and organizations that are having a lot to say over what happens in the city of Pittsburgh, over our residents who are actually paying the taxes. You know, and it's like Councilwoman Gross talked about that balance and for me, it's a real concern. But Director, you mentioned that you had, how many park employees?
Total, counting RAD and non-RAD, it's around close to 110, somewhere in that vein.
Yeah, but you, total employees, do you have, that are street employees?
Oh, in public works, close to 637 employees.
So if you wanted to, you could re, you could move those employees around and you could put 300 into the parks if you wanted to.
Well, that would certainly hurt other aspects of, you know, street maintenance and environmental services. I mean, we are looking at some things, but...
Yeah, but we're not always doing street maintenance, we're not always filling potholes, so they could go into the parks if you had to do it.
We've looked at that. The amount of jobs or work or task required of the street maintenance divisions, it's a 12-month operation and, you know, it's more than potholes and emptying rubbish and there's so many tasks, vegetation control, I mean, there's, it's a 12-month operation.
Okay. And then, Director Miller, could you tell me how many people you have employed?
City parks?
Miller, Miller.
Oh, sorry.
Excuse me?
Could you tell me how many employees you have?
We have about 45 full-time employees total at the Conservancy.
Okay, and what is your total budget? I have it here.
It varies from year to year, but on average, it's between seven and eight million dollars a year.
Seven, eight million dollars. And you anticipate that this budget will bring how much to you again? 10 million?
We have, again, as Chief of Staff Gilman said, we have not at all talked through any of those details. Again, that is part, if the referendum passes, we've talked through some elements of an agreement, but that would have to come to city council and for city council's approval if there were any allocation of resources to the Conservancy.
What happens to Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy if this tax doesn't pass?
We, I will think back to a meeting Mike and I were at, we were asked that question before, what do we do if the tax doesn't pass? Well, we will continue to do what we've always done, which is try to raise private funds to incrementally and keep making improvements in the park system in smaller scale.
And I do want to say again, I think that Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy has done a lot of great things for the city of Pittsburgh and I think that they do a lot of great things for the parks. I would voluntarily donate to Pittsburgh. And I've said this before, that I think that this is something we should have on the back of the taxes, allow people to voluntarily donate or to have the conversation that we need to raise taxes in the city. If we really have all these issues, instead of coming back and nickeling and diming people to death and we talk about the health of people and how great it is to have a park, there's no more stress than having somebody ill or having to worry about financing and finances, your personal finances. And that's a stress that a park isn't going to relieve necessarily. And so I think that, you know, we really, we really have to worry about our residents. We have an aging population and we have, we do have some younger people moving in, but we still have an aging population. And those people are challenged every day and they're the ones paying these taxes. And I think to me, that's the part that's making me so angry is it's easy for everyone else to come in here and say that, you know, so-and-so should pay taxes when sometimes some of those very people aren't even paying the tax. And at the same time, you may not be in the same financial situation as some of our residents who are struggling every day. And we actually have a lot of students who are paying student debt and they can't afford some of the stuff that we're asking. And so if we're nickeling and diming people to death instead of having the conversation that, you know, listen, if you want this, this, and this, it's going to take us to do this with our taxes and having an honest, an open conversation. I'm not opposed to us having that conversation. I think we actually should be talking to our residents about what the real costs are associated with some of the things people want to see happen. We have a lot of slope remediation issues in District Two, you know, Controller, you live in the area. And it's going to cost a lot of money. I think it's like 70 million dollars or something for all the slope remediation issues that we have. That money's going to come from somewhere. And so, you know, to me, if you're going to raise taxes, I want you to raise it right now to stabilize neighborhoods. You know, I'd like to see, you know, to stabilize the hillsides that are coming down all around. And I think a lot of our residents would like to see that too and I think they would probably be more supportive. But I really think that this is not the first time, it's not the last time that we're going to see these efforts to raise taxes through a referendum. And I, I think that, I like having the longer conversations, I think the more transparent you are, the better. And then I think if residents don't feel like they're being railroaded, that it's happening so quickly, they may actually be more supportive. But I've said from the very beginning, I think that residents have a lot of questions, they're not being answered, you know, accurately and they're not being answered openly. I think a lot of them want to have a public conversation about this and not necessarily where Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy or the city of Pittsburgh is directing the whole conversation, but I think they want to have, have some televised conversation. So I think I'll be calling for a cablecast post-adj, a public hearing regarding the situation next week. I'll call for it because we have to, more than one person saying, saying something about it. But I just want to say that I, for me, the whole conversation has been how this has rolled off from the very beginning. I thought that it was less, I didn't think that the numbers, I'd like to know about the numbers that you're presenting to the public and where those numbers came from because when I hear about Emerald View Park and master plans and some of those things are already done, and I'm thinking, how are those numbers being included in the numbers that you're presenting to the public? And we know, we know that those, some of those projects are done. And so when you're giving numbers, you're not giving, to me, I don't think they're accurate numbers and I, I think I'd have to more refer to the Controller about some of that. But that's my biggest concern. So I think that we're probably going to end up with a public hearing. Any final comments? I'll let you make your final comments. Thank you. I'll have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'm moved.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.